...regrets telephone number email but don't give it back to me until the end of the meeting because one of you might have a job which says responsibility to the end of the meeting because I shall republish this tomorrow because then it will be an up-to-date thing. I need to know what ward you're working for etc etc. Okay, if you could do that for me, it would be quite handy.
What's the next?
It's because of the council.
Okay, item 10 on the thing is to approve a replacement signatory to the account. So who would be the co- that wants to be a signatory to the accounts? That can be the new councillors. The word is that we have, when we sign checks, it has to be done at least to people. We normally have a bank of about three, three people. Whenever you have a, so that when you need to pay something, they get populated by the clubs, you get invited in if you're living in town. I used to do it, but I just, when I worked, you know, it was brilliant, I could pop down, but I don't work in over anymore, so it's difficult. So does anybody want to be a signatory?
Well, I don't work, but I, you know.
We don't have to work.
No, it's not me, I don't work.
So you, you'd be up for that?
Just to sign my name.
Just to sign, yes, just to sign. And the thing is, all you're doing is you're making sure that the works order and the invoice and the cheque stuff all match, and that's, that's...
Can I speak?
Of course you can.
When I get some details about exactly what I have to expect.
Yes, yes. And if you weren't comfortable signing anything, you would say, can you explain this to me, please?
Who's the, who's the first signature?
Um, whoever gets to the cheque wrote first.
You need, I need to forgive your form from HSBC. I just need to spell out.
So, so the proposal is, um, Annie, Anne or Annie?
Anne.
Well, I can't see the Annie on there.
She's got a E on there.
All right. Just put them out. Anne Skipwood. So proposal by Richard, Anne Skipwood is the new signatory. Seconded by Stan, all those in favour, you can vote for yourself.
Oh.
So that's your answer. Well done. Um, also with Vince having left the council, left a vacancy on the, is it Vince? Left a vacancy on the planning committee, so we're looking for a new member of the, a new new member of the council to go on to the planning committee. Anybody interested in doing that?
I'm not.
Yeah, of course you can.
No, I'm not going on it.
Can I point out you need some training and also taking take break during the day?
So anybody interested in that? It was, what it does entail, we get planning applications from people in the open area, so the open wards. Somebody wants to build a garage or a porch or an house extension, whatever. It goes through to Brooklyn County Council. Um, we're a consultation body, so what it is, they send the plans through to us so that we can review them, look at them and give our opinion and feedback. We go through a process where we sort of say yes, we authorize it, we go no, we would reject this, but Brooklyn County Council do have the overall say on it. You can?
We have delegated powers.
Oh yeah, we have delegated powers. If there's any one or two applications and there's not time to call a meeting, then the clerks have delegated powers and there is a, communications are sent out. But basically, it's pretty straightforward.
Do we have to know about the plans and...
That, yeah, it's like, I mean, it's amazing.
You don't have to understand how construction of the work, construction of a building works, what you'd have, what you were guided on, somebody alluded to, Joyce alluded to it, but there is training that is available for people that want to be planning, where you get told what sort of things you should be making the decision on. So you can't go, I don't like that because it doesn't look nice. It has to be, um, this is too tall and the window overlooks somebody else's property or it's too near the road. And God says, so what does that mean? I don't know that. I don't have to make a decision. Someone wrong thought you'd put me upstairs. Okay, yes. Anne lives about 50 yards from me. Right, so...
I don't know.
Yeah, so we could make...
I've got all the information, I can just say I'm not trained.
Yeah, so you would be, you would be called to be done.
No, I don't think I would.
No, no. You would have to make a decision going, oh, that's, the foundations aren't deep enough. Uh, they, the county council do put that mark.
It's helpful. Um, Brooklyn County Council has told me that they are looking into bringing them in available to all parish councils.
I've heard this said as well. In that, I really know that, Alison, just to pursue it on this. Yes. Let's see if we can check it up. So Anne, are you interested in?
Yes.
So, um...
Which needs to grow.
So, um...
If you want to do it, you're sure. Is it your portion? That's a point, the trial of the court here. Look at that.
Yes. Okay, so Stan has proposed Anne, seconded by Samyam. All those in favour? You can vote for yourself, Phil, so that's unanimous.
Chair, may I just also say, I have reported the fact that, uh, the Brooklyn County Council are proposing to accept all councils, okay? But I think we have an urgent case by never the person who runs it, so I'm going to contact him and see whether or not he would just do a runoff from us.
Well, yeah, yeah, if you may agree with Alison, I'll have to agree with her. Item 12, this is the Facebook page which was being managed. Once again, because of the councillor residing, we have limited bodies now, we like to have more than one person doing it. So it's to let a new member to manage the council's Facebook page now. Myself and Samyam have been working on this together. It can be more than two people to get approved.
I haven't been to Facebook.
No.
So, 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 so. So passing around the table, does anybody want to make any comments on this or put themselves forward? If not, I'm going to propose to Samyam anyway. So, proposed Samyam is the Facebook contact, seconded by Martin, thank you, Martin, all those in favour? That's unanimous as well, because I saw your head on the go. Sorry, it's, yes. So we can make sure we keep up to date on current lists on what, who does what and send that round to Alison because we're new members. Then everyone has a report somewhere. Item 13 is a request to use, a request for permission for a London concert band to use the band's stand and cut clothes for the project. All right, comments observations looking around the table, Joyce?
This is becoming an annual event, while attended, and I would propose that I am going to do it together. Thank you.
Anybody else got any other comments or observations on this? No? So proposal by Joyce that the permission is given, seconded by Richard. All those in favour? That's unanimous as well. Can you make sure that we let? No?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, 14, right. In your packs, there's various documents the council has. Um, I would suggest that after tonight, whereas sometimes I destroy my agenda, because I don't keep them, like, um, some of the offices, well, the offices obviously have to keep it separate, not, I don't keep my documents, but these ones here, if we agree to accept these in, then I'll be, I'll be taking these back home and putting them in my, uh, comatose. So item 14 covers several documents and each year for those new members, the council is meant to consider each policy and document it has. So there's several here. The first one that comes to light is the drug and alcohol abuse. I appreciate the fact that the new councillors may not have a chance to read these and fully comprehend them. I will say that these weren't plucked out of thin air, they were already in the council files, as something that we had adopted. And we actually, we utilized two checkpoints, well, three in fact. I had a read of them, because I was curious, and I thought I should, because I hadn't seen all of them. Secondly, we asked HR Advice and Solutions to give them the once-over, so, because we've been paying for that service, that's only £100 a month, we have it until June, so he's given his opinion on it. And also Malcolm's giving him the once-over. Any adjustments or changes or anything that would have been, needed to have been done, would have been done, but I don't think there were that many. And as a result, we now have a document to be reviewed. Any comments or questions?
Because we've got three new members tonight, and I suggest, uh, that, obviously we'll be applying to read it tonight, that we refer it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, can, everybody think?
I would agree with that, but I think, will you allow the comment on it also? Yes, so that it can be taken away as part of...
I think the comment should be made next.
Well, I don't think anyone would be late, because it might be...
Only comments denied?
Yes, um, a general comment on, on, on it.
On each one?
No, as a group, because I read them.
All right, well, all right, well, we'll, 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 we've got, right, we've got a proposal on the table that we defer. If I go by the, the rulebook, Martin's proposing that we need a, is this somebody who wants to second that, that we defer? Right, now Martin's made a council proposal that we are allowed to comment. I would need somebody to, that ought to be a proposal and a second as well. Really? Can we just not leave it until the next one, or can you email it through?
Well, if it's deferred to the next meeting, you're going to have a chance to make the comment then.
Fine, yeah. I think, I mean, in the big scheme of things, I mean, there should be kosher. So proposed by Stan, seconded by Joyce, all those in favour that these are deferred? And then, yeah? So all those voted? Oh, actually, no, I said, so what I'd say is that hang on to these, because ideally, because we don't really want to repeat them, we don't want to repeat them all again. Um, and if you do have some questions or comments, be prepared to have them written down. I think Martin and Ria has written down anyway, because he's usually on the board like that. So make sure you get them written down, right, so I'm just going to extract these out. Right, okay, so they're deferred to the, that'll be the April meeting. There might be some more policies and procedures involved then, because this is only about hardware. These, these were the, these were the simple ones, as we responded. Item 15 is, are we on the statement, Ken?
Yes.
Any comments or observations, please? Martin?
Yes, I don't have to list all my questions that I had, because they were answered by email, but the appropriate place really is for questions in the council chamber, but we have members here that insisted that we do it by email, but I appreciate that the office answered my questions. I'm not 100% satisfied. And as we are on the financial section, I would like the Policies and Procedures group to review the situation of financial regulations, because the copy I've obtained from the council is dated last year, beginning of last year, 2016, January. And the reason is, because a lot of my replies said that officers use their discretion. Now, there's nothing in the financial regulations that actually say, we employ officers, we employ a car, an assistant car.
Chief of emergency.
And, and we, we have nothing in outstanding orders or financial regulations that say discretion can be used. We did agree as a council to put things such as £5,000, which should have been worth it better, that it was for emergency work, but it seems to be used a lot, like not emergency work, that's all I will say, and that needs to be reviewed.
Okay, all right, all right, so do you want to make a note that the, can we just check?
The reply said we use that question, it's not emergency work.
Can we, um...
It's not, it's not up to £5,000, it's not necessary.
But we should take that away, that it needs to be reviewed.
Can we, Malcolm's going to say something?
Sorry, just to make the point, questions relating to the accounts very often need research. So it really is a bit of a cornucopia, asking a question without notice at a meeting, because not in case of that itself, we go, go through the accounts and give a proper, detailed, informed, accurate answer. And that's the reason why we encourage questions.
But it's got to be honest with you. Yes, and it's got to stop people getting frustrated, hasn't it? Um, can you make a note, please, Alison, that just to, just to check the date on the, when the financial regs were checked, because we're only going to check the language. I thought, I thought they had, I thought they had. What's? I thought they had New York. They're going to do a check the date line. So looking at a proposal then to, obviously, I would probably, I would imagine that the new members might want to have stayed on this, yeah, just because you haven't had a chance to fully install them, and that would be very fair of you to make that comment. So looking for anybody else around the table to propose that we accept this, this statement on the council. Proposed by Stan, seconded by Richard, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Abstentions? Four. There it's resolved, they are accepted.
Are the, is the information now clearer on the internal expenditure that you're getting now from the RBS system?
Yes, thank you, that was written, it was spread to you. Yeah, thank you, John.
I would say, I was going to say that, but if, if any of the new members want to come in and understand these, in that track, the clerk will be contacting you all anyways to sort of get them in and sit down and go through some of this procedural stuff and explain things, so it might be...
That's a good one.
Questions will be questions. Trees. Item 16, right, trees. Consider report the lime tree and to make any decisions as necessary. And to consider a tree survey, to make any decisions as necessary. Anybody got any comments or observations on the number 16? Martin? This is the tree that fell down. Martin?
Yes, I really want to reapply the part of the system, Clark, yeah, and there is some comment that some people have suggested that the tree should be felled. Do we have any reports from those people saying that?
Because the letter came through from somebody.
That, that letter gives consent, but that's not...
No, this, this letter gives consent. This actually says that the tree doesn't need to be felled, it can be pollarded.
Yeah, no, but in, in this report, you know, it says that, that Paul Ford and, sorry, I'm, symbiosis has said that it possibly could be felled, but I think what we need, what we need is some, a report. Sadly, I think it will need to be felled, but it should be felled. Well, it's to decide whether we can. Once the initial work is completed, Open Town Council then can decide whether to wish to submit a notification to felled the tree altogether.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm saying is, then, once the five-day notice is to, is to do the initial work and to remove it, Open Town Council then can decide. It doesn't say that Paul Ford or symbiosis has said that, it said Open Town Council can then decide.
But it's like the whole paragraph seems to be, yeah, but anyway, what I would say, what I would like the council to, to consider the theme is that the report we've been given is out of date, 2015. And we need a proposal that the council gets a new report from there.
Right.
Because it's out of date.
During the lime tree, yeah.
Yes, I know, we need a report on that tree to know whether it can be saved or whether it can be felled. And also, also, we, we've been asked to approve expenditure up to £2,500. Then once again, we don't have quotes when we're required, we know what...
There is a quote from, from Paul Ford, who went out on the day to, because we pulled him out on emergency, because it was a health issue.
Just a quote to pollard it?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, but, but we should really know a figure and, and we should have a quote from somebody else. Yes, but it just says up to.
Yes, that's what it says.
But, yeah, fine, but can you not be interruptive, please? But we, we need three quotes at least. We do, because this is not an emergency work.
Thank you. No, okay. Let's toss them together.
But can I finish what I wanted to say, please? It's, the emergency work was done. I don't think it was done adequately, because we still have a branch and the park is littered with littered debris. It should have been cleared completely.
Right.
What's there to make sense of?
Will anybody else not talk on that?
But when we get quotes, we should see the quotes so we know what we're paying for, that's what I'm asking.
Martin, very good point, I would like, just to give, for the benefit of everybody around the table that didn't know, during the storms, this tree had a failure, failure, one of the branches collapsed. Initially, it was thought it should be demolished, but then symb, the lady, symbiosis lady, whatever she called it. Leslie, thank you. And Paul said, in that track, it could be just pollarded. Pollarded, for those that don't know, is where you take all the branches that hang out like this, that take the point of balance from the centre out to the edges and trim them off, so you've got all the weight going down the centre truss. So what do you make a tree as safe as you can, or try and, or try and retain the main structure of the tree? In other words, you don't want to lose a great big, beautiful lime tree like that. Joyce, did you still want to say something?
Hey, the ashtray one with more of a coverlet, but gendo derma, I'll explain what it is. It happens mostly with broadleaf trees, oaks, beech and lime. There is no control that can be used on this, this infestation. It is a brittle failure and it's called a cinder failure. And if you get down to the roots, it's just like charcoal, and it all just disintegrates. Now, we've had three, is it, x-rays into the, into the trunk? It might be two, right, in the past? And they've said, let's just see how it goes. Now, this costs a lot of money. So, though I would, I would like, no, not I would like, because I'm on the side of the tree, but in years to come, probably in 18 months' time, we shall have to felled it. This is the only way we're going to try and save this tree. This tree, if it's felled now, if those of you who remember the chestnuts in Northgate, when they actually pollarded those, there was such a backlash from the public about them. Look at them now, they're beautiful. And that's what we don't want, is a backlash from the public that we have felled a tree and we should have tried to keep it. So what I am saying is exactly what the chairman has said, pollard it back in 18 months, two years' time, have another x-ray done, and I'm sure that will pacify not only the officers of this council or the officers and members of RCC, but the rest of the public. Okay?
Okay, um, right, so in relation to, there's nothing we can do about all the trees on the other report. It is true what Martin said, that this report does appear to be outdated, so I would be suggesting that maybe that somebody needs to recommend to the council in April that this is...
I was just going to say, it would have to, because these reports cost £10,000.
So if, if we need another report doing it, it needs an agenda item in April saying why, just before I get it. And that can either be done to Martin, you can bring that, or Joyce can, the tree warden, but we have not got, it's not an agenda item to discuss here now, but I do agree that this was outdated, and I did look through this with due diligence, to see if, having not acted this, was it contributed to that, and it has been done.
No.
Has to focus on the agenda item, so, uh, the recommendation is that the tree is pollarded up to an expenditure of £2,500, so that's the pay. You opposed that, sorry?
No.
Sorry, anyone want to say something? Please do.
Okay, they're doing the pollarding.
Yes.
What about the inside of the trunk that's got this massive hole in?
Yeah.
Where we've had fires in it before? And they're going to do something to cover that so that they don't set more fires in it?
I don't, I'm not aware of. I believe in that track, the fire damage that occurred at this tree was when somebody set fire to a toilet, no, it was a toilet, there was a, a plastic, what do they call those?
Portaloo.
Portaloo, thank you. There was a portalo in the park that was used at one of the events one year, and I know this because it was high through the crew, I know. And somebody decided they'd torch it, it's when I was police, I was last year police at the time, which wasn't funny, because it, and it was literally right there, and I believe where that fire and damage to the trunk occurred. Looking at what the experts have said, Paul Ford and symbiosis lady, Leslie?
Leslie Adams.
They said that by pollarding, it gives the tree the best chance to survive. If we find that people do start targeting it, setting fires in it, then that would be a, a reason for us to actually turn to county councils and say, it's actually attracting more trouble, it could be dangerous, and then we would lock it, rid of the council. No, Anne?
I hope I'm not saying too much in my first anything.
No, no.
Yes. But I absolutely adore things, and I was heartbroken, not just about the new ones as well. I went to investigate this one, and although I loathe, absolutely detest kind of cut trees down, that branch that came off was really, if you look at the, you can see from the picture, good wood round it.
Yes.
And I worry because we're getting more and more of these dummies all the time that are coming over, and the worst thing in the world would be if this fell on somebody.
Okay.
And although it breaks my heart to say it, if we're pollarded, it might not be for very long, we've wasted £2,000. I hate to say this, but, and it, I shall cry when it comes down, but I do think it has to come down, and I'm sorry.
This is my answer to the report.
It's, it's, I mean, we would have to get planning permission and all sorts of things.
And that's why I sent round, I emailed you all, the five-day notice. The county council wouldn't let us felled it. That's what I had a copy by email.
Yes, yes, sorry, has this tree got a TPO order on it?
I have an algorithm in the council, I'm going to give it to you.
Yes, it, it is, if it's going to fall on somebody, but this is why, I, I'm not a tree expert, and I'm, and I'm the same as you, I'd hate to see this tree come down, be cut down, and I'd hate to see it fall on somebody by pollarding it. As I said a short while ago, I know we strengthen it because it puts all the weight coming down through the trunk. The bit that failed was where one of these branches reaches out, and was, that's what caused the failure here. And if there is a continued risk in the future, that's why it says on here, the town council then can apply. To felled the tree, it probably going to cost, what, £4,000, £5,000?
But the issue of the five-day notices, that to, to make it safe now, because it would have, for us to felled it, it has to go through planning, and that takes weeks. So that is why they gave the five-day notice to pollard it.
It's called bureaucracy.
Otherwise...
I'm not saying that, I'm brilliant.
Otherwise, it'd have to go through planning and it would take weeks.
So, well, the, the document says, so a proposal, I'm going to propose from the chair that I'm taking advice of the professionals and the agenda item, that we pollard it as per five-day notice, so that's proposal from the chair, seconded by David. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those against? Two. No, that's all right, well, it's going to be pollarded, and let's see how long it lasts.
Chairman, can I raise a quick point of information? The local government act says that we should tender for free quotes. Our financial regulations should not undermine any law of the land, and, and that is the problem I'm having, is that the office keeps saying we don't have to get quotes.
Thank you, Ryan. We've, we've checked this point several times, because we raised it on numerous occasions, and every time we've checked it, the, um, the people that we've checked it with have said that our standing orders and how we interpret the local council administration of Ibrox is we're perfectly within our rights to do what we're doing.
But it doesn't look good.
It does not, it's not whether it looks good, it's whether what we're doing is correct or not.
We're being careful with all the money, we just don't go out there and...
Right, well, I've answered the question, I'm not going to give it to anyone. Um, sorry. So that was the tree. Oh, um, oh, right, yeah, right, to consider a tree survey, to make any decisions as necessary. Now, to me, I believe, because of how outdated this is, I believe that the council should be considering whether or not to redo this survey or not, and I think that I need to make a decision that it comes back in April.
Also, I would, also, in the comments as well, that there's also Willow Brook and Voices, so there are three, there are three parks that will have to be done.
Okay, right, all right, so Joyce said no, so Joyce, what do you want to say on this? What should we do with this report?
I have to say, I've already written this out, so I'll read it now, because I'm getting a bit stewed up about this survey and how old it is. The reason why the tree survey has been left until now? In the last two years, there's been unprecedented insinuations, lies and harassment from one serving councillor against not only the officers, but against fellow councillors. Due to the stress and extra workload this has caused, has caused much work and has had to be prioritised. The work on the trees are now being addressed. I could go on about this problem, but I think I've said enough to point out that the problems we have at OTC, and it's not, it's certainly not of the officers and the majority of the fellow councillors making. This has gone on long enough that we've had such harassment from one councillor. I am sorry, I think this survey, although it's old, should be done now, because we've already had... already had so more branches off, and we cannot wait to have symbiosis come in and doing another survey. If we do this survey, and in eighteen months' time, bring back Lesley, let's get on with the job. This is getting ridiculous, actually saying, "We must get quotes, we must get quotes." No work is getting done at this town council because of this problem. Thank you.
Martin?
Um, this quote, or whatever it is, report.
Report.
I sat next to the councillor, tree warden, and supported her budget increase for next year, which I believe is thirteen thousand pounds, for the purpose of getting a new report. So, why is it now being said that a councillor is harassing and et cetera, et cetera? I read this report, and there are items that are highlighted as urgency, they had nothing to do with any member of this council, this is a failing of the office and the tree warden. We didn't even see this report, so I object to what the tree warden has just said. We have a serious problem here, we have now thoroughly thought where a tree is falling, and everybody keeps saying to me, "What are you doing with it?" I say, "I don't know." So, we need a new report for all the trees before somebody is being, and I supported thirteen thousand pounds in next year's project for a new report, so there's no excuse. It is, because you sat here, councillor, you sat here with a piece of paper and held it down the line, and I supported it.
Thank you.
And I, how can I place that as a calling of the meeting?
Now, it looks pretty sick, yeah.
It's the budget piece that you're giving on the podium.
I think the amount of trees that have come down, we just have to, I, I would say, in that fact, it's not about the report, because another report is probably going to tell us lots in this report. I would say that this report is as outdated as what it appears to be, and it's not that outdated, it's sort of it has to be done in two thousand and seventeen, that's when they should be reconsidered. In the meantime, I would suggest, and I would propose from the chair, because I'm fed up with all the, um, uh, this is not an opportunity to have a dig at each other, it's an opportunity to target the job in hand. So, the proposal from the chair is that we ask Paul Ford to go through this report and give us a price on actioning all the items that have not been actioned. Let's stop waiting on the report, and maybe go and action on what is in the report.
Absolutely.
So, the proposal is that we ask Paul Ford to cost up to get these actions completed. So, people stand.
We need a report for the bar report.
If, if we need a report, Martin, then somebody can come to me in April with an agenda item saying, "Want a report?" Yes. So, the proposal was that the, we get costings for these jobs that have not been completed, that's been seconded by Stan, all those in favour?
Yes.
Okay, that's one, so that's eight, four, and one abstention?
Yes.
It's, and then, and then in April, if somebody does feel that we need another symbiosis report due on the whole of the estate, be it barn door, be it.
Can you tell me about barns?
I don't know, I'm just going on what, no, what it is, no, Martin, here's a tree that's on the Tresham Land Institute, which has fallen over there.
Yes.
It is, it is, it's within our, it's within that man.
We need it.
Yep, yep, let's have a tree session in April.
I have a question.
Yesterday.
Sorry, the trees that overlap from this castle onto that big car park.
Yes.
Are they ours?
No, no.
No.
Actually, the city does look very dangerous. Very, very, actually.
Although, I wouldn't also allow extra questions, but.
As the head of the council, from this corner of the car park going down into the grass and round on the bank there, what trees remain are ours on there?
We, what it is, Open Town Council's responsibility of land, if you look at the construction, look to the top of the, the wall.
Yes.
We have land that goes beyond that range, up to the top of the, um, the, the back under the castle.
Near councillors know that it's, uh, it's started on there.
Thank you, no problem.
On the castle?
Yeah.
Is there, no, of course, there's a, they started on there.
Anyway. So, yeah, basically, just ask Paul Ford to give us a price on the jobs that haven't been done on that report, please, and then in April, in April, that will come back to be agreed, Martin, that it carries out the work, if it's more than twenty-five thousand pounds, Martin. But, Mother, Mother, what do you think? Right, item seventeen is, this is decide whether to exclude pressing public from section one of the project bodies, Admissions to Meetings Act nineteen sixty is amended to, whenever we talk about staffing issues, we normally, we don't have it public, Martin.
Um, I'm a little concerned that we're asking to exempt this public from item number eighteen, because we won't be discussing financial matters or contractual matters, and one of the items was actually discussed and recommended in public, and that's the appointment of the new members' staff was a recommendation from the starting committee made in public. Um, I, I have a feeling we're using the exempt too much, the, the, the only, the only thing we would need to exempt on that matter is if we were to be discussing the salary.
Right.
So, I don't think that that item needs to exempt. Of course, number nineteen has to be, because that's a request of the local council, but I don't think that number eighteen has to be exempt.
Right, right, so, and now, we make your comment, so, um, so, seventeen then, do the exempt pressing public for the consideration of the staffing item eighteen. Proposal by David, seconded by Stan, all those in favour, will be exempt pressing public? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you, your hands down, all right, one, two, three, four, five, six, that they're exempt. Abstentions? Two against? One. So, it's still currently, I'd love to turn a few videos to find.
We haven't done number.
Nineteen, all right, then, to someone with the exclusive pressing public on item nineteen, which is the local plan presentation, proposed by Martin, seconded by Stan, all those in favour? That's going to be, now, that's what I'm hoping we'll do, is eight and one abstention, is that right? Yes, eight and one abstention, that's okay.
That chairman, what do you have to point out, because usually we're back to getting a consultant.
Yeah, normally we handle that.